Reminder tonight that the IID is asking residents in the valley to conserve energy amid today's heat wave and you can do that by avoiding the use of major appliances from 4:00 PM to 9:00 PM. The IID also reminds keeping your AC at or above 78 to relieve stress on that energy grid. Well, switching gears and taking a first look at weather with these temperatures that are creeping up and continue to do so, we'll head to the weather department with Scott Gross, a live look outside at this time. Scott, nice to start working with you, my friend. Well, we'll have Scott in just a moment, actually. I promise it's nothing personal as we take a live look on our RV World Sky Cam. I gotta love live TV. Temperatures right now in those triple digits as they will probably progress into that for the remainder of the week. As for your temperatures right now, we'll have that in just a little while with Scott Gross on the other side of the show. As we continue to move forward though, nationally tonight, rescue workers in Surfside, Florida have recovered another body overnight from that devastating building collapse, bringing the death toll now to 11. 150 people remain unaccounted for. Mark Strassmann has the latest from Surfside.
Rescue workers created a bucket brigade as they removed concrete rubble the size of basketballs bit by bit.
We're going to continue and work ceaselessly.
Officials in Surfside, Florida say five days after the collapse, there is still reason for hope.
There are certain areas that we have not gotten to, but we've been able to place cameras that seem to have large enough spaces voids that occupants may still be in there.
First responders from Israel and Mexico are helping in the search. The team from Mexico, Sedania International, is using a dog named Oreo.
Because of the weight, she can go in other places that have more instability that another dog cannot go.
Some family members have criticized the search efforts, saying they're going too slowly. Over the weekend, relatives were escorted to the site where they got a firsthand look at the safety risks involved.
They witnessed a rescuer tumble 25 feet down the mound. That is a perfect example of the situation that we're dealing with.
Federal investigators are also on the scene.
The people of Florida want to understand how could this happen? And then what could we do to make sure it doesn't happen again?
An assessment done by engineers in 2018 noted that in the garage, an abundant cracking and spalling of various degrees was observed in the concrete columns, beams and walls. But an attorney for the homeowners association, as well as an engineer who spoke to CBS News, both said nothing warned of an imminent catastrophe. Mark Strassmann, CBS News, Surfside, Florida.
Well, summer is here and many Americans are looking to put COVID concerns and restrictions behind them, but health experts caution the pandemic is not over just yet. Natalie Brand has the latest tonight from our nation's capital.
As COVID restrictions continue to lift nationwide and the first cruise ship sets sail, health experts remain on edge over the fast-spreading Delta variant in communities where vaccination rates still lag.
If you're not vaccinated, Delta is highly transmissible, is more dangerous.
The U.S. will fall short of the president's July 4th goal of 70% of adults at least partially vaccinated, and a number of southern states remain below the national average. Arkansas governor facing a rise in new cases in his state says the overwhelming majority of hospitalized patients have not been vaccinated.
If incentives don't work, reality will. And as you see, the hospitalizations go up, the cases go up, I think you'll see the vaccination rate increase as well.
Other states are still banking on incentives to help boost vaccination rates.
We still have three more million dollar drawings.
North Carolina's governor introduced the first two winners of its COVID vaccination lottery.
Who believes that you're gonna win a million dollars?
A second lucky winner received $125,000 for college. Another dose of encouragement comes from a new study that says the two-shot vaccines made by Pfizer and Moderna may protect against the coronavirus for years. But some infectious disease experts are now considering whether the Johnson &amp; Johnson single-shot vaccine may require a booster shot of a different vaccine to protect against the more contagious Delta variant. Right now, the CDC is not recommending booster shots for any of the approved vaccines in the U.S. Natalie Brand, CBS News, Washington.
And with that, let's take a look at where cases of the virus stand today. Yuma County reporting no new cases. Imperial County reporting 33 new cases of the virus. Happy to report both counties reporting zero new deaths. As for that vaccine rollout, both Yuma and Imperial Counties have administered more than 185,000 doses of that vaccine countywide.
Should negotiations continue for lawmakers on a new infrastructure plan? I'm Skylar Henry at the White House where President Biden is cleaning up some comments that threw a deal into doubt.
Plus, how the Supreme Court ruled about a transgender student who sued to use the bathroom that corresponds to his gender identity. Stay with us.
Experience the difference at Imperial Valley Honda. While the chip shortage is affecting new inventories throughout the West, as one of El Centro's largest volume dealers, we just keep getting bigger. With our sister store in Chula Vista, we offer one of SoCal's biggest Honda inventories with over 500 brand-new Hondas in stock or on the way. Plus, choose from our enormous pre-owned inventory of over 400 cars, trucks and SUVs from most major brands. Come see our great selection, great prices, great people that care about you. Come experience the difference at Imperial Valley Honda. IBHonda.com.
Every picture has a story. At Doctors Without Borders, it's our mission to change those stories. Because thousands of children are still dying of measles. We're there with preventative medical care. Because every day, hundreds of women die from causes related to pregnancy and childbirth. We're there to assist hundreds of thousands. Because in some countries, there are only one or two mental health professionals. We're there to provide support, counseling and clinical care. It's your care and compassion that make this happen. Picture the impact we can have together.
Looks like it's time to trade, because it's trade month at your local Ford dealers. Get more cash for your eligible trade-in, any brand, any model, all month long. Get Trade Assist cash on top of what your eligible vehicle is worth and trade up to a new Ford truck. Your trade-in is worth more than you think. Trade up during trade month. For a limited time, come get an extra $3,000 for your qualified trade toward a 2021 Ford F-150 at your San Diego County Ford dealers.
Now 13 on your side.
Welcome back. President Biden has walked back a veto threat which threw the bipartisan infrastructure bill into danger of not passing. Skylar Henry with more details from the White House tonight.
President Biden says he will stick to the infrastructure deal he struck with a bipartisan group of senators.
Bottom line, infrastructure is exactly what we negotiated.
The president heads to Wisconsin Tuesday to sell the bill to the public. And Transportation Secretary Pete Buttigieg toured the Hudson River train tunnels in New York Monday.
Folks have been talking a lot about infrastructure for a long time, but this time, for the first time in a long time, we have total alignment between the President of the United States, the Biden-Harris administration, leadership in the House, the Senate, and importantly, the American people.
The White House is doing some damage control after the president threatened to veto the transportation bill if Congress didn't also pass the massive budget bill, which includes Democratic priorities.
That was not the message he intended to send.
Republicans say combining the budget bill puts the bipartisan infrastructure deal at risk.
The only way we can get there is to delink the two issues. They are really separate issues.
But Democrats say they won't be able to get the votes for either bill unless they bring up both bills at the same time.
Let me make that clear. The bipartisan infrastructure bill and the budget resolution are tied together.
Democratic leaders say they want to vote on both bills in July. Skylar Henry, CBS News, the White House.
Skylar, thanks. U.S. forces came under rocket fire in Syria today. The attack comes a day after the U.S. carried out airstrikes on Iranian-backed militias. It's unclear how many rockets were fired at this time. Some landed within the immediate vicinity where U.S. troops are located, but no reports of injuries at this time. The incident took place at an oil field site the U.S. calls Green Village in the larger security zone where some 900 U.S. troops operate to protect, support local Syrian fighters, actually, against ISIS as well. Back at home, the Supreme Court will not hear the case about a transgender student who sued to use the bathroom that corresponds to his gender identity. In doing so, the justices upheld the Fourth Circuit Court of Appeals decision, which ruled in favor of the student, though justices Justice Clarence Thomas and Samuel Alito said they would have taken up the next case, the case next term, that is. The case concerns the scope of the Title IX, which prohibits schools from discriminating on the basis of sex. Gavin Grimm, a transgender male, challenged his school board back in 2015. The school was requiring him to use a either unisex bathroom or the restroom corresponding to his sex assigned at birth. Well, this brings us to our topic of the day today, should transgender students be protected more in schools? Yes or no? If you're interested in taking part, you can comment by heading on over to kyma.com/polls. Let us know what you think. Leave a vote. You can even leave a comment. Might even see it shared during our 10:00 PM newscast.
Hey, everybody. We are still under an excessive heat warning, and I'm also watching a tropical storm Enrique. I'll let you know where it is and when the warning will be lifted straight ahead in your first alert forecast.
Just when you thought it was safe.
Oh, my God. Oh, my God.
To get back in the dating pool.
I feel like there's just like something that I'm like not seeing.
I don't think they know what they got coming for them.
I just want to be able to be happy. Full of love here, and I just, I don't feel it at all.
We're gonna need a bigger island.
Can't even hold it together.
Love Island, new season July 7th on CBS.
If something happened to you, what would happen to them? Their home, their education, their future? You need life insurance, and chances are SelectQuote can help you get it for less than a dollar a day.
SelectQuote found Jacob, 40, a $500,000 policy for only $19 a month. And SelectQuote found his wife Wendy, a $500,000 policy for only $17 a month.
Our secret? At SelectQuote, we aggressively comparison shop up to 10 highly rated companies to find you, the company with the best rates.
We found Gary, 35, a $1 million policy for only $22 a month.
Why pay more? Give your family the security they need at a price you can afford.
Call 1-800-260-6735. That's 1-800-260-6735.
At a price you can afford. SelectQuote, we shop, you save.
Next ET, Mary J. Blige's private pain.
Why so much, so much stuff had to happen to a little girl?
What you never knew about her childhood trauma. Plus, only ETs at home with country star Chase Rice.
I got deer out here. I got turkeys, but I don't know what else I could put.
Some babies.
Human babies?
Why he had to be rescued by neighbor Luke Bryan.
Went over to his place and knocked on the door. I'm covered in mud, no shirt.
Welcome back. Before we get to our weather report, Scott, I do want to say it's gonna be a fun ride being a part of the team now, taking over for Christian Galleno, very great guy, got some big shoes to fill, my friend, but I look forward to seeing what's going on in the weather and sports department every day as well.
Yeah, well, glad to have you. And sorry I missed you beginning of the show. That was all part of the initiation. We like to have fun around here, so put you on the spot.
One, nothing.
It'll keep going. Yeah, we're glad to have you. It'll be a great ride as we go forward. And speaking of great rides, we're right about where we should be temperature-wise. Yes, we are under an excessive heat warning, but that will be lifted here very shortly. Currently, we're at 109 in Yuma, 110 currently in El Centro, and the average for this time of year is right around 107. So we're not too far above where we should be. Let's take a look outside, shall we? At the RV World Sky Cam, beautiful view of downtown Yuma right there. That is Fourth Avenue. You see the birds flying up in the distance. You see the haze and the mountains and a slight breeze as well. You can see the breeze moving the trees just a little bit here and there now as we take a look outside. And our satellite and radar will pop up this cloud, batch of clouds there. Watch what happens as we get through the afternoon into the evening. Yeah, they're coming down to the south with us, and they might be bringing some possible rain with them. We've got our eye on this batch of clouds making their way into the desert southwest. Jumping ahead and taking a look at the excessive heat warning, again, this is in effect until 8 o'clock tonight, then it will be listed. But I want to show you the story we had earlier. We've got all of this heat going all the way up here, triple digits in the Pacific South and Pacific Northwest, I should say. Also, when I lived in Alaska two years ago, we had a lot of heat up there as well in the 90s, 80s, and the air conditioners and the fans were coming off the shelves too, so I know exactly what they're going through up there. Jumping ahead and taking a look at, here is Tropical Storm Enrique coming through the Baja Peninsula. It's breaking up right now. It's not going to be very heavy, but it could possibly bring some rain or disturbances our way in the form maybe of some higher winds or even some rain. So we're keeping our eye on what's happening with Enrique down to the south of us as we jump ahead to our future wind slide. You can see those gusty winds coming into tomorrow morning around 4:00 AM to 8:00 AM, and they're gonna make their way all the way through Imperial, across the valley tomorrow afternoon. So please be aware that we are gonna be a little windy going into tomorrow. Now, a look at our air quality index brought to us by the Imperial County Air Pollution Control District. Moderate all the way through the valley, all the way from top to bottom, and that's okay. It's right where, not where we should be, not where we want to be with the wind also playing havoc with some of that as well. Current temperatures, as I mentioned, 109 in Yuma. The sun came up at 5:33 this morning. Will set tonight at 7:50, 110 currently in El Centro with a 10 mile per hour gust there. Here's a viewer photo. Look at this one. Fantastic. Antonio Ochoa, "The Rise and Shine," he said. It's a beautiful shot, all kinds of wonderful colors that he has. We want to see more of them. Send them our way. You can find me on social media or drop it off on our homepage, kyma.com/share. Or if you have your phone, we've got a QR code right here. Take a photo of that, and you can send it into our photo gallery and possibly see your photo coming up on a future weather forecast. Jumping ahead real quick, let's take a look at your 7-day forecast. Yeah, 20% chance of showers tomorrow, Wednesday and Thursday. Same can be said for the valley. Take a look at this, a higher chance, 30% tomorrow, 40% Wednesday, and another 30% shot on Thursday.
13 on your side.
We'll be back. We'll be back for sure.
Well, the Holtville softball team comes up just short in the California Southern Section State Championship game. Scott Gross shares a recap straight ahead in sports.
One-hour air conditioning and heating. Knows how uncomfortable it gets when your AC goes out. You want it fixed fast, fixed right, and get a fast quote. Unlike some companies, we don't give you a quote until we actually see what the problem is. Then we'll give you a straightforward price and stand behind it. I meant buy it. We'll stand by it. Count on One Hour for an on-time guarantee.
How often do we think about who we are and the paths that brought us here? Every decision made, every opportunity we seize or let go. How often do we realize that we have the power to decide? Decided we want to feel the warmth of the sun in our face or the mountain wind, the smell of that new car that will be our future accomplice of adventure? Freedom is useless if we don't go out into the world and dare to be what we thought we couldn't. Jeep Freedom Days, get out there and be what you want to be.
Everybody has a flashlight, but can your flashlight do this? The Bell &amp; Howell Tactical Flashlight can. The Bell &amp; Howell Tac Light can do things no ordinary flashlight can do. Look, this civilian flashlight puts out pathetic light, but our military-grade Tac Light, that's 22 times as bright. It's so bright, it can be seen up to two nautical miles away. Only a Tac Light has a super-bright strobe that can stun and disorient would-be attackers. A car battery will stop working in sub-zero temperatures, but even getting frozen in a block of ice couldn't make our Tac Light stop working. It's tough enough to survive getting run over by a Humvee. Try that with a regular flashlight.
You can get a Bell &amp; Howell Tac Light complete with a lifetime guarantee for just $19.99 plus free shipping. And while supplies last, you can even get a second one. Just pay a separate fee.
To order, call 1-800-369-0338. That's 1-800-369-0338 or go to trytaclight.com.
On Saturday, the Holtville Vikings softball team hosted Highland out of Bakersfield in the CIF South Section Division IV Championship. The Vikings won their first CIF Division Championship back in 1998 and now look to bring the first state title to Holtville at home in front of a record crowd. Let's head out there. Yeah, in front of a packed house, Holtville was ready to go. And their opponent, the Highland Scots, also feeling loose. Sophomore Callie Strom getting the start in the circle for Holtville. To the top of the first two out, two on, two strikes, Highland Marissa Campos gets a hold of this one, sends it over the right field fence. Highland gets the first lead of the game at 1-0. I know they said they're two on, but there was not. It was a solo shot. How would Holtville respond? Bottom first, one out, and runners on the corners, freshman Caitlin Havens grants out to short, allowing Demi Johnston to score and tie the game at 1. Fast forward to the bottom of the third, Holtville up 2-1, and senior Emily Zarate lays down the sacrifice bunt. Johnston scores from third. Holtville up by a score of 3-1. To the top of the fifth, two outs, runner on second, Holtville up 3-2. Again, it's Marissa Campos, this time an RBI single to center to tie the game at 3. Highland and their fans liking what they see. Later on, with the bases loaded and still two out, freshman Jennifer Padilla rips this pitch to third. It's off the glove of Johnston. Highland scores to go-ahead run to take a 4-3 lead. The Scots hang on to win on the road by a score of 4-3 and win the South Section Championship. Holtville assistant coach Carrie Ann Johnson comments on her team after the tough loss.
This team, they played their hearts out. I mean, they left it all out on the field, and that's all we can ask for as coaches. I'm just so proud because every single girl came out here today and they gave 110%. And just, I'm proud of them. We're gonna miss this team. We're gonna miss this team. It's been a great season.
And we're proud of them as well. To the NBA playoffs and a recap of Saturday's Game Four matchup against the Suns with the Clippers. Late in the fourth, Devin Booker makes the hard drive to the basket and gets hit with a charging foul. Booker would foul out of the game. Suns up by 5, 79-74. Three seconds left in the game. Paul George purposely misses the free throw, but little Chris Paul is able to gain control of the rebound. Paul gets his shoe ripped off as he's fouled on the play. Paul hits his free throws to seal Game Four, a win for Phoenix, 84-80. Game Five is tonight, and with the win, the Suns will reach the NBA Finals for the first time since 1993. Simone Biles secured a spot on the United States gymnastics team for next month's Tokyo Olympics. The four-time Olympic gold medalist competed at the U.S. Gymnastics Olympic Trials in St. Louis, Missouri over the weekend. She nailed down one of the two automatic spots on the team. Sunisa Lee secured the second automatic spot on the team. Jordan Charles, Grace McCollum and Michaela Skinner, along with Jade Carey, will make up Team USA on the gymnastics front next month. The Olympics are scheduled to start on July 23rd. And a couple of quick notes, the Suns and Clippers just got underway, and yesterday the Bucks beat the Hawks to take a 2-1 series lead. In the NHL, Game One of the Stanley Cup Final between Montreal and Tampa Bay is currently underway. Tampa leads that by a score of 1-0. That's all we got in sports. Brandon, back to you.
Scott, good stuff, my friend. Coming up next on 13 on your side, many companies are opting to go hybrid when it comes to their workforce. Coming up next in our Eye on Jobs segment, we'll tell you how you can get involved.
We're at our best when we stand together.
That's when we make the impossible.
Possible. That's what stand-up to cancer has done. Because you stood up.
Because of you, survivors are out there.
We're making the impossible possible.
We're committed to making every cancer patient a survivor.
This is the moment to redouble our efforts.
Together.
We stand up to cancer.
Tune in August 21st at 8/7 central.
We all know that movement is like medicine, but getting the movement you need to feel better can be a challenge. Now you can keep fit while you sit with Q-Bee, the world's leading compact seated elliptical. Q-Bee gives you active sitting, letting you burn calories and keep moving in an easy and low-impact way, all while you work, read or watch TV. Q-Bee was named a Top 10 gift by Time Magazine and has been featured all over the world. It's whisper quiet while it works your abs and core, hip flexors, glutes, quads, hamstrings and calves.
Q-Bee is a lifesaver for me.
Here's your answer to your problem.
I feel young again.
Join the hundreds of thousands of people moving more with Q-Bee. Call to find out how to get your Q-Bee with free shipping and a 30-day completely risk-free trial. You'll also get this Q-Bee workout mat free. Now keep fit while you sit with Q-Bee.
To order, call 800-493-3170. That's 800-493-3170. Call now.
Imperial Valley's fastest-growing new vehicle dealer, Chrysler Dodge Jeep Ram, is now your premier certified pre-owned dealer destination. Overwhelming sales volume these past several months has opened up the opportunity for you to pick up your next ride. Certified pre-owned vehicles have many of the same advantages as new vehicles. Factory warranties up to 100,000 miles, low-interest financing, 24-hour roadside assistance and more. So remember, if your next vehicle purchase is not certified, it's just another used car. Come in today and see over 100 pre-owned vehicles in stock now at your Imperial Valley Chrysler Dodge Jeep Ram dealer, Highway 86 in Imperial.
Now 13 on your side.
Well, today's 13 on your side's Eye on Jobs, many companies opting to go hybrid when it comes to their workforce. According to our experts at the Goodwill of Central and Northern Arizona, 43% of workers would rather stay home. So businesses are offering some employees to work from home or do a hybrid schedule. Leah Soto Graham with the Goodwill Career Center of Yuma says what comes with some challenges, the main one being the management of your time.
Getting back into the swing of things with looking at when do I need to leave the house to get to where I need to be on time? How much time is it going to take me to drop my kids off at daycare? Or how much time do I need to allocate for cooking dinner at night if I'm getting home a little bit later? We're really gonna have to focus on planning ahead.
Yeah, a lot to consider, but Soto Graham adds that workers should prioritize what they need, what needs to be done, both at work and at home. For more tips, you can visit our website, kyma.com. Well, still ahead in the second half of the show, a free bowling event for veterans and active service members. Plus, our weekly segment, Military Matters, who we are honoring for their dedicated service in our community.
This summer, go big or go home.
Back up.
It just got real.
Here come the islanders.
I'm here to find love.
Endless fun, endless sun, endless savings. When you're cruising in a new Honda Civic with the latest tech and more power than Corolla, la vida es mas divertida. Have some fun in a new Civic for as low as $169 a month. Don't miss these 4th of July savings. Hurry to your Southwest Desert Honda dealer today.
James Brown and Bill Cower welcoming you back to Dennis Melvin's house. It's time for the midnight snack run.
This is one tricky obstacle course. Sticking to healthy habits in this kitchen is going to take focus and determination.
He's already entered the snack part of the course, and he's eyeballing a jar of chocolatey candy.
That is tempting right off the start.
He's reaching, Bill, but he pushes it away.
Great stiff arm.
He's approaching a plate of delicious-looking iced cookies.
Oh, Dennis, you only want one of those?
He blows right by him for the apple.
The fridge, it's make or break time, JB.
He stares down some rich-looking treats. Uh-oh, looks like he's headed for the soda. Wait, he juke left, grabs a water bottle and shuts the door with his elbow.
I gotta see that again.
Great move.
Now he's just gotta get out of there.
Look what dropped from the sky.
Don't do it, Dennis.
Bill, he somehow keeps moving.
That's the way you execute a midnight snack run.
Stand-up to cancer and rally, want you to reduce your risk for cancer.
From working day and night to capturing hardened criminals.
We protect our nation's borders 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Fiscal year to date, here in the El Centro sector, we have nearly 35,000 apprehensions along our border.
And what drives them to continue protecting our nation?
I'm from this area here, and that's why I'm passionate about being a Border Patrol agent.
The life of a Border Patrol agent.
How often do we think about who we are and the paths that brought us here? Every decision made, every opportunity we seize or let go. How often do we realize that we have the power to decide? Decided we want to feel the warmth of the sun in our face or the mountain wind, the smell of that new car that will be our future accomplice of adventure? Freedom is useless if we don't go out into the world and dare to be what we thought we couldn't. Jeep Freedom Days, get out there and be what you want to be.
Introducing the Cool Turtle, the ultra-comfortable mask enhancer that creates a protective, cool, and breathable space between your mask and your face. Simply slide under any mask or gator and immediately feel the refreshing pocket of air surrounding your face. Cool Turtle's ergonomically-designed, soft, comfortable shell immediately reduces mask friction, allowing you to breathe and talk in a comfortable environment.
I can actually breathe with the Cool Turtle, no more sweating.
It's like I don't even have a mask on.
Call now and get not one, not two, but three Cool Turtles for just $10. Order now and we'll send you two more Cool Turtles free. No fees, absolutely free. Plus, you can get a 10-pack of four-ply face masks. Just pay a separate fee. This offer is not available on Amazon. Get the real Cool Turtle now.
Call 1-800-270-1219. That's 1-800-270-1219, or visit at coolturtle.com. Order now.
Selfie. Nailed it.
Now on 13 on your side, charged in court, the two suspects tied to the armed home robbery in the foothills approached the judge, plus deputies, as well as a community mourning the loss of a sheriff's deputy whose life was taken over the weekend. And the waste transfer site near the foothills is receiving more and more trash, costing more money. The county's plan of action is 13 on your side starts right now.
13 on your side.
Thank you for joining 13 on your side. I'm Brandon Mejia, the newest addition to the team, and thank you for joining me tonight. We apologize for some technical difficulties but are happy to have you with us tonight. Let's get to those top stories, though, at this time. Two of the men accused of committing an armed robbery in the Yuma foothills were formally charged in court today. They are facing a slew of criminal charges. As 13 on your side's April Hedinger reports, one of the suspects was wanted by California police.
The two alleged armed robbery suspects, Corey Gallagher and James Brazil, appeared today in court. Both of their bonds are set at $30,000, except Gallagher was changed to a cash-only bond because of a warrant he had out of California. They are each facing six charges, including armed robbery and burglary in the first degree and aggravated assault for allegedly tying up the victim while using a deadly weapon.
Armed with a deadly weapon or a simulated deadly weapon. It's mentioning AK-47 pistol and/or 9mm Ruger handgun, a Class II felony.
They also stole some of the victim's property, like a two-door Infiniti convertible, and will have two more theft charges. Tonight at 10, hear about some of the other items they allegedly stole from the victim, as well as restrictions for the defendants. Reporting in Yuma, April Hedinger, 13 on your side.
April, we'll see you back here at 10 tonight. The Imperial County Sheriff's Office, though, continuing to mourn the loss of one of their own after a deputy died this past weekend in the line of duty. California Highway Patrol says Deputy Anthony Redondo was responding to a call in Sealy Saturday evening when he was involved in a crash with another vehicle at the intersection of Forrester Road and Ayton Street. Officers say he unfortunately died at the scene. There were six other people involved in the crash who were taken to nearby hospitals. Deputy Redondo had family in the Imperial Valley and joined the force less than a year ago.
Well, obviously, there's gonna be a significant loss to the agency and, quite frankly, to the community. This was a young man who had a very bright future in front of him.
Memorial services are still pending. Redondo was just 25 years old. You can stay with our CBS mobile app to be the first to know when those services are available. Well, local veterans and active-duty service members are invited to Inca Lanes to enjoy free bowling this Friday from noon to 3:00 p.m. Disabled American Veterans Chapter 11 is sponsoring the event with the help of Bowlers to Veterans Link, a national nonprofit charity organization. All attendees are welcome to invite one guest at no charge. Shoes will be provided by the bowling alley. The chapter says it wants to help the community come together.
It is really important for all veterans and active-duty members for the camaraderie, for the healing. We have a lot of veterans here in Yuma that suffer from service-connected PTSD, disabilities. Having that opportunity to all get together and share stories and network with fellow veterans, comrades in arms, it's just so important for the community and for families.
It can go a long ways as well. 30 lanes are reserved for the event. Inca Lanes may offer bowling for children for a small fee, but if there are lanes available, that is, if you're interested in attending, you're encouraged to call DAV Chapter 11 to RSVP, but details for that event can also be found on our website. Well, 13 on your side would like to introduce you to Staff Sergeant Ricardo Luna. Sergeant Luna currently serving as the Religious Affairs Non-Commissioned Officer at the Yuma Proving Ground Chapel. And as the Religious Affairs NCO, Luna supports all soldiers, that is, their families and civilians who are part of the YPG community. His duties include providing chapel programs, assisting with worship services, and conducting counseling for those in need of emotional support. Luna, who grew up in Yuma, has been serving his country in the U.S. Army for nearly 10 years. He is currently working on his bachelor's degree in human development and family studies in hopes to one day own his own childcare facility. On behalf of 13 on your side and myself, we thank you for your service, Sergeant Ricardo Luna. And if you're watching and you'd like to be recognized as well, or know someone, that is, you can send us a picture or a video telling us who they are, what they do in our armed forces, and why we should honor them. You can send those nominations to 13 on your side's Facebook page by using the, or by using the Share tab on our website, of course. We make it very easy for you, and you can tune in every Monday as we thank and honor those who help keep America safe. Switching from news to weather tonight, Scott, you know, as I maybe you knew, the room here, temperatures seem like they're staying the same.
Decided to come back and join you again, Brandon. Glad to have you. Yeah, temperatures not, they're normal, right where we should be. The average is 107. We're currently at 109 in Yuma, 110 in El Centro. No records today, no records broken over the weekend, even though we were hot. You know, we were anywhere between 112 and 114 in areas, but no, no new records. Let's take a look outside, shall we? With the RV World Sky Cam, beautiful view of downtown Yuma right there. You got the haze and the mountains off into the distance, a slight breeze down here as well. Now, coming up in your First Alert forecast, we do have an opportunity. Three of them, actually, for possible thunderstorms in the area. Let you know when you can expect them. Also, we're still under that excessive heat warning, even though we're not real hot right now, we're still watching that. I'll let you know when that's gonna be lifted. And another fantastic viewer photo to share with you. You guys out there are sending in some real fantastic ones. Brandon, can't wait to show you the latest one that we have.
Looking forward to it, Scott. Another news tonight, the waste transfer site near the foothills is receiving more and more trash, costing Yuma County more money. Well, now the county wants to start charging for these services. Yuma County, the only county in the state, actually, to provide this service at no cost. But the county proposed continuing this service for a small fee of $5 to $6 per load, citing that there simply is no budget set aside for the large amounts of waste that is dropped off daily. Residents already began voicing their concerns about the possible charges.
It's become much more widely used. We set it up as a way to try to avoid people dumping stuff in the desert. In other words, people were, you know, they didn't have a garbage collection system, so they would dump their stuff on the desert. So we decided, okay, maybe what we need to do is provide them with a place to do that.
The public hearing, set for July 19th at 9:00 a.m., anyone with concerns about the possible charges can attend the meeting and be heard as well.